Welcome everybody to our February 10th. We start off with our agenda with the Des Moines International Airport Authority update.
Good.
Mr. Hansel.
First time I've joined you on one of these and I've talked to Rick and the mayor and we'll do this some more in the future. I've got a lot to tell you today because we've had a lot of stuff going on out the airport, all that good stuff. I think we've done some good stuff for the city of Des Moines, actually for central Iowa as you'll see when I talk about it. You've got on your desk there a couple of maps and there's one up there so you can kind of see, that's the entire thing and I'll focus on another map that you have there that has a red line, we'll come to a little bit, I'll tell you about that. Since this is the first time I've been here with you, I'll give you a little background because I know I've got two council persons that have not been here, were not here when we set this up a number of years ago. My name is Ed Hansel and I'm the chairman of the airport board and I have with me today Jim Erickson who's also on the airport board. Jim, he's been on that board about 18 years and I've been on it 20 years. George Flye appointed me when we first reorganized it 20 years ago. So I've been on all those times, you might say, "Why haven't you got more done?" That always worries me when I look back and say, "I've been there for 20 years." But we've done some good things over the years and some particularly good things here within the last couple of years. We are an authority which is a statutory animal. The Iowa legislature years ago passed a bill, a law, a chapter that says that we, that a city like Des Moines can turn over this airport to a separate entity, is an independent entity from the city, operates independently with, it is, but the board itself under the statute can be appointed by the city and that's the course that you chose when we set it up. So you ladies and gentlemen, through the mayor appoints the members of the board. Members of the board are Jim and myself and Liz Ward who's a person, active person here in the community, Mark Feldman who's a lawyer on the east side of Des Moines and Kurtie Levy who is a, in charge of a division for Chemmon Industries here in Des Moines. Lots of different ways we've learned to how you structure airports vis a vis cities, but this is one and actually this is the one that across the United States they've moved to because to have the independent authority. Some reasons for that, one of the big reasons is that the airlines like to deal just with one entity rather than with two entities, a board at the airport and then the city council. This has worked out very well here as you will see as we talk through this. We worked on this for about a year with you folks trying to set this up back in 2011 and that, we had to get the FAA approval, Federal Aeronautics Administration approval. They are very much with us out there because they regulate us, they control us, they establish our standards, they inspect us and they had to give the approval. It took a little while, they got it approved, they approved it and in 2001, November 1st of 2011, I'm sorry, 2011, we became an authority. That's when that was transferred over to us. Now what they did before we did that, before that effective date, we worked out a very extensive contract with the city and this new legal entity, this authority. And it covers everything that could be thought of in this type of situation. But basically, all of the assets of the airport at that time were transferred, conveyed to this authority. The real estate was leased to us for I think it was 100 years and so it sits off there independent and operates in that manner. All of the assets were transferred and by the way, all of the liabilities that ever came about out there, those are now ours, that authority. So we cover, try to cover everything with the usual insurance coverages that you ladies and gentlemen have here on the city. We're quite a bit smaller than you as you know, so we, there's some things we cannot assume the liability for like you can here because you're so much larger. The, we meet on the second Tuesday of every month at nine o'clock in the morning, we send out our agenda in accordance with the statute, just like you do. We always send it out, unless we have a special meeting, we will send it out usually on a Friday for our Tuesday meeting. And we get a, we get a pretty good turnout because there's a lot of people interested in the airport, so we'll have a lot of people that will attend our meetings and give their opinions on things. Now, one of the good things that happened to us, some of you, I know Skip and I know Chris knew my, my son Jordan who was a lawyer here in Des Moines and certainly Frank knew him for a long time. Jordan's son was a practice law with us, he got an opportunity to go to work with one of the Warren Buffett companies over in Ohio and I said, "You better take that one." So he, he went to Ohio, became a lawyer over there for one of the Buffett companies and he called me after he got there and he said, he said, "Do you know, he said, 'My boss over there told me that you have a fellow who is retired in the Des Moines community who is the best or at least one of the best airport operators in the United States.'" And this fellow had been one of the, our type board members over in Omaha and had known this fellow. That fellow was Don Smithy. And so Don came with, came to us, soon as I heard about that, I called him, Jim and I took him to lunch, said, "Would you be willing to consult with us?" And he said he would, he had a non-compete, waited until that expired, I called him that day that it expired and said, "I'd like to have you come on and consult with us," which he did. And it turns out our executive director then moved back to Omaha where he wanted to retire and so, and so Rick and Rick Clark here and others decided that we would put him on as our executive director. A great move, good, lucky move you might say that we got him. Don had been in Omaha Airport, had run the Omaha Airport very successfully for 25 years. He'd been in the airline industry for 40, 42 I think he'll tell you, but for 25 years he ran the Omaha Airport. And the good news was that he, at that time, he was, became very close to the Southwest Airlines executives. And as a result, they, in the process of them getting Southwest Airlines, he became a very good friend and a very good, they had great respect for Don. What we did then is, of course, we attempted to, I'll tell you this, in the 20 years I've been on the board, we have tried and tried and tried to get low fare carriers into Des Moines because that's what, the competition makes all the difference in the world. It is the bottom line. If we can get competition among the airlines, we can get good fares out of Des Moines. And we have, through the years having been involved with the Chamber of Commerce and so forth, we always had problems attracting business and therefore jobs to Des Moines because of our fare structures. But, and we, we've suffered by comparison, by competition with Omaha and Kansas City, both had Southwest, a strong low fare company. Matter of fact, we, we did some not terribly scientific studies, but we did go through the parking lots, take down information on, on the license plates, trying to figure out how much business were we losing to Omaha and Kansas City. Our best estimate was we were losing about 20 to 25% of our ridership to those two communities. They, as a result, when Don Smithy came to the airport, he of course immediately contacted his, his contacts at Southwest. We brought them here, we got to know some of their, some of their executives, I got to know some of their executives, others. We did everything we could to interest them in Des Moines. You, we, back in the old days, we'd even gone down there and visited them in Dallas to try to induce them to come here and we send them stuff all the time, no luck. They're inundated with people saying, "Would you please come to our community?" Because they know that that makes all the difference in the world to the fares. Now you say, "Well, yeah, but there are other low-cost carriers, low fare carriers, aren't there?" Yes, there are some, but Southwest has such a presence and such strength in their operation that they can compete. As you remember what happened like Access Air, for those of you here in Des Moines, Access Air, what happens is the big carriers just wait them out. They drop their, they drop their fares down to what the low-cost carrier is, the low fare carriers and pretty soon the low fare carrier goes out of business and then the rates go right back up again. Well, they can't do that with Southwest because Southwest is a very strong national player. So what happened was is we, we knew that they were going to acquire Air Trans. Air Trans Airlines was already in Des Moines. So we thought this is our great opportunity, naturally we did everything we could do to get Southwest here and encouraging them to come. Again, we got, we were fortunate because they did decide to stay in Des Moines. I say we're fortunate because other airports bigger than us in the, around the, around the United States did not keep, Southwest did not come in even though Air Trans was acquired and shut down. So we were very, we were very fortunate in that respect. We are very appreciative of everything that Don has done for us at the airport because without him, we would not have, in my opinion, we never would have gotten Southwest. Southwest is competition and with competition, our fares become competitive with Omaha and competitive with Kansas City. We have, as a result of Southwest, which came to us, their first flight was in September of 2012, but since they announced well in advance, our fares started coming down to be competitive in 2012. In 2012 then as a result, we had the best year we've ever had at the airport, the best year. We've been working for years thinking we're gonna, let's get it over 2 million passengers. That's a key, let's get it over 2 million, never could do it. 2012, we went over 2 million passengers for the first time ever. It's because of competition. That pulled, you probably, maybe, here's a picture of me, not a good picture, but a picture of me on the front cover of Business Record and the heading is "Coming Home" because that's exactly what happened. We, we got that Omaha, we got those Iowans who are going to Omaha and the Iowans that are going to Kansas City, they came back. We, we got 2.1 million passengers then in 2012. We just closed 2013, we beat it again, we went up 6%, we're now at 2.2 million for 2013. Where are we, what's gonna happen in 2014? I don't know, I'm sure I'll be back reporting to you that sometime, I hope it keeps going up, we hope it keeps going up. Okay, so that's kind of the, that's how it came about. First flight then for Southwest was September 2012. As you know, Chicago has always been a high fare market for us. It's also been our biggest market for people going to Chicago. We, we tried everything to get that in. We even took in a contingent, including the governor in one time and talked to the, to the CEO of United Airlines because that's the biggest carrier in Chicago. And had a nice talk with him, he set this, I always remember, he's kind of set the scene. He said, "Are you guys gonna try to tell me how to run my business?" And we said, "No, just the part that goes from Des Moines to Chicago, that's all we're, that's all we care about." So if we could just work, and we did work out a deal and sure enough, after a while, it collapsed as well. Because it, that was a very, we're a lucrative market into Chicago for them, but Southwest, their first flights are to Chicago. Now they, now have done, and now it go directly to Las Vegas. That was just this year that they started that. And that, those flights have been extremely successful too. They're running 90 to 100% full on their flights to Las Vegas, which is, that's very good, that's good business for them. Prices are still good. Now here's an interesting fact. We've always had problems with our high fares, we're known as a high fare market. In the most recent figures that came out of the National Transportation, who keep track of all this stuff, is that Des Moines was the fourth, we had the fourth largest reduction in fees in the first quarter of 2013. That's the most recent figure. That's in the entire nation, the fourth best reduction in fares. That's because of competition. That's excellent. Now we've had, if you calculate what that does for savings, persons who are flying out of Des Moines, millions of dollars because you multiply the savings by 2.2 million dollars, 2.2 million people, you know how that works. Incidentally, Kansas City, Omaha are now reporting reductions in their flights, in their, in their travels. And oh, by the way, they're still our competitors, they are now both have announced and are working on improvements to their terminal facilities, which that's one of the things we're gonna be talking about a little bit today, our facility, which is a, which is a 1950 model. We've tried hard to keep it up, but it's a 1950 model. Now, National Bureau of Transportation Statistics were excited as I said because they told us that we were fourth best in the nation for the first quarter of 2013, most recent figures. A lot of things about the airport, people, you know, ask me questions about it, I thought I might address some of those. You know, people say, "I didn't get my baggage in time." Well, the airport is really a three-part entity out there, a three-part business operation. We have the airport itself, that's the physical structure and everything that's done there. Then you have TSA, Transportation Security Administration, they're a federal agency totally independent from us. And then you have the airlines, they're totally independent from us and they, they of course, we sell them the opportunity to fly out of our airport. But when it comes to baggage, that's their business, we don't, we don't handle that at all. When it comes to flights, cancellations, that type of thing, that's their business entirely, we don't have any influence on that at all. As to what flights they actually have, that's also 100% theirs. It's, they are highly sophisticated, we know, because everything is computer operated and if you look, get on the line sometimes and you see a price for, for a ticket and you compare Omaha, you may find it's, it's real close. You might check 10 minutes later and find it isn't close because those things change all the time. It's computer operated, they have some very sophisticated people running those and they, they react to the market at the time. One of our fellows in my office said that he had tried to get tickets during spring break, tough time, but for kids and so forth, then he found out our tickets were, were more expensive than Omaha. We checked that, come to find out the Omaha ones was, had a 30% shortfall on the tickets they were selling. And so what they do of course is they raise them a little bit in Des Moines and they make more money that way. That's how it goes. People ask me that, "Well, what about TSA? You know, you gotta get going through there faster, blah, blah, blah." We don't have any control over them, we can talk to them, but that, that's totally a federal agency that operates on their own, on their own ticket so to speak. They're very cooperative, we talk to them all the time, but they're independent. Airlines are independent as well. What about the revenue sources? People say, "You fellows out there at the, fellows and girls out there at the airport, the authority, you've, you've got the ability to tax, don't you?" And the answer is, "No, we don't have the ability to tax." And I say, "Wait, wait, how much money does the city send you? The city of Des Moines sends you money, right?" The answer is, "No, no money from the city of Des Moines." As a matter of fact, as you probably were, it's the reverse of that, we send the city money. We buy services from the city, we have a pilot charge, we have a payment in lieu of taxes every year that we pay to the city, $640,000, that was worked out, $640,000, that's worked out many years ago, prior, well, what happens is the FAA looks at that and they wanna know, wanna make sure that, no, we're not giving anybody a special deal. We worked that out years ago and we operated under that formula. We, we buy police services, security and the thing, that's why you see the police out there. In addition, just to, police would be there perhaps anyway if we had an incident, but we also have police on site all of the time. We have 22 policemen that rotate through and we pay the city for that, $2.3 million each year. We have, we buy services from the city. We buy legal, we buy HR, human resources, and we buy information technology. And that total is about three-quarters of a million a year that we pay to the city for that. We also pay stormwater testing, quarter of a million, stormwater charges, half a million. So between the bunch, we're at about 4.5 million that we pay the city each year. What about, what are our other sources of revenue? Because in order to make us to operate, we of course have to generate money to do that. Our airline fees, we charge airlines about $12 million a year to land at the airport. And these, these folks at the airlines are very, very knowledgeable, very sensitive. They, they have statistical knowledge figuring out who's, who are the high-cost airports around the country and who are the lower costs and every time we bump a little fee for anything, they know about it, they complain about it and hopefully we'll keep them happy so they'll keep coming. We get, a part of that is PFCs, we get landing fees, we get terminal rents. We have parking revenues, that's a very important, we get 9.9 million a year, 9 million, 900,000 a year in parking revenues, but we've got a, of course, we built a big parking ramp out there years ago, as you know, used to be just a big lot and now we've got the big ramp. We've got to pay, we owe about $48 million on our, on our bonds that were issued when we built that facility. Of course, we're very conscious of the fact we're, we don't want to ever miss a bond payment, unfortunately, we're not having any problems that way. We have the rental cars, the more successful the airport is, the better the rental car business is for the rental car companies and they pay us a percentage of their revenues and we make $5.8 million a year from them. We get CFCs, which is a charge that is charged to people who rent the cars of a dollar a day, a dollar fifty a day, something like that, and that's a smaller amount, that's a million five. So our total revenue runs about 3, 30 million dollars, about 30 million dollars a year and, and we actually, if you count in depreciation on our assets, of course we exceed that, but our cash flow is such that we're doing okay. As a matter of fact, during this period, another good thing that's happened since we became an authority, because of the way we've operated and we have now raised our bond rating from an A minus to an A stable. And what does that mean? Well, until we actually have to raise some money, it doesn't mean anything, it means our bonds, it means that S&amp;P, Standard and Poor's said we are stronger than we were before. So that if we had to issue new bonds to, let's say, build another parking ramp, which is always a possibility, we are, our rates of interest would be lower. So that's, that's good, we handle the new. Budget for this year, we're predicting $36 million in total revenues, expenses of about 16, I'm sorry, expenses about 26 and so that doesn't quite cover, if you add in depreciation, we're not quite covering, but we will, cash flow. So that, that will be fine, we believe, we watch that very carefully. Another major source, another major source of revenues for us is the FAA, Federal Aeronautics Administration. Because as you land and take off out there, they, they have helped us by, they build the big stuff, they build the, not the terminals, but they build the runways. And, and just like everything else in the world, you have to demonstrate them that you know what you're doing or they're not gonna give you the money. There are two types of funds out there that we get from the FAA. One is called discretionary, which means they actually have discretion whether to give it to you or not, depending on how well you're doing. And the other is the mandatory or the basic, and that one is, they call it entitlement, but that's another way that all airports line up to get their money and federal government allocates it around and that's the entitlement piece. Well, the good news, frankly, because of the good work some of our staff has done out there this last couple of years since we became an authority, not that they didn't do a good job before, but we did have to do a little tweaking because we had some problems we discovered when we got into it. The, in fiscal 2012, we got $11 million in discretionary and $5 million in entitlement. So we got $11 million that they had the discretion to give to us and did give to us. And in 2013, last year, we got $4 million two in entitlement and $8 million in discretionary. So that's, that's for us is big money and where does that go? That goes to the, we put that to our runways and replacing runways, taxiways and keeping all of that done. Well, we also now have, we've got a five-year program that we've instituted now, which will replace one of the major runways out there. It's gonna be a lot of construction for the next five years, but we have a dip in one runway, which must give the pilots interesting experiences, well, of course, they're told about it, but we don't know what's under there. For some reason we've had, we're having a slope in one of the runways. We are concerned, maybe it was an old dump or something that the city used. It's way old, way before anybody, since the memory of man runneth not, we just don't know what's under there. We're gonna take that out, find out why that dips, pull it back up. That's gonna be a $25 million expenditure over the next five years. Now, the good news is the FAA gives us 90% of that money and we have to come up with 10% of the money. That was true with the other money as well. So those major expenditures like that, where you have the FAA helping us out, those are always 90-10. And 10% we have to come up with. The parking is always an issue out there. It's a good issue to have, it's like saying, "We got a problem, but it's a good problem" because that means we're really growing. We have, we've got 4,200 slots now plus another 700 that we can call back. What we've done there, we've redesigned some of our parking. It was in the park, when the parking ramp was built, for some reason the way it was designed by the architects who designed it, we figured out how we could gain another 130 slots by changing how it operates in effect. We just rebuilt us, the connecting section out there and we got 130 slots there. We tore down an old post office building that had some environmental issues and got another 360 slots out there since, in this last couple of years. And now we've added another 1,000 slots at the south end. And the way we did that is that the, because of the success of the car rental people, they needed more space to park cars. So we have leased that space to them, but we have the right to call back 300 slots whenever we need it. And of course, that's like going to course, that's like going to church on Easter. We, we know what happens at, at spring break time, Thanksgiving time, those key dates, our needs for parking grows. And so those, that will be, we can call back another 300 slots for those. We also have another thing that we've done in addition to the, the, all the parking that we have added. We've now instituted in 2013 what we call commercial fees, commercial fees. If you look on your map, best you can see, you'll see, and you'll remember from being out there, when, when there's an area just to the, what would be to the east of the terminal itself, and you've already got two lanes in there, where people come and drop people off for, for slots. And then on the other side, you'll see a lot of, of vehicles parked, because those are picking up people for other part, remote parking lots, either ours, or other private companies that have parking lots in the area. And also, you'll have the motel, hotel vehicles as well. Well, what we, what we discovered was, we've known that the other airports have had this commercial fee arrangement for many, many years. We were one of the few in the area that did not. But the, what has, what they do is that to the commercial area, which is the lane furthest to the east, that's where you see the buses parked, the that are going to the remote lots, and also our own lot, our own vehicle as well. You'll see it there, sitting there waiting to pick up to take to our remote lots. But we discovered that 56% of all the traffic through that line, due to some statistical analysis, was really these us with our shuttle bus, and the shuttle buses for the, for the other remote lots, as well as the hotels that, that bring their, and also we have the cabs that make their living there as well. And we instituted a, a fee to help us pay for that. That costs, we figured that costs us about a half a million a year for that, just the commercial area there. That's maintenance, policeman, you'll always see policeman there, you'll see police car. We have to provide that police car. And as a result, we instituted, which won't, won't start until this year, but there'll be a small fee that will be charged for people. For example, there's a, people complained, pointed out, that's done at every other airport that you fly into. One exception is actually Omaha, because Omaha bought all the surrounding, they had enough money, they just bought everything around them. So they don't have hotels and things like that there. But the, everybody else has it. So we decided we should do that and get some help. That's not a large item. That'll just, that'll, we'll get about a fourth of our expense back. So that's about $150,000 for a year, not a large amount. That will go into effect yet this year, and there'll be an actual measuring device that will, that, that will know exactly who is coming in, who isn't coming out. There was a, some were complaining, but come to find out, it amounts, for some of the remote parkers, it costs about 20 cents a day per parker for them. So it's not a large item. Let's talk about some of the other developments that have, have occurred at the airport. As you know, we build it big. If you drove by, you'll see a big maintenance facility down the south end for the rental cars. And what they do there is they service their cars, they wash them, they store them down there. And we built that for them, but of course, we, we now, we financed it for them, and then they pay us a fee for that. And we actually get a little return, not a giant return, but better, better than certificates of deposit today. But anyway, it's, we do get a return on that investment there. You've seen that some of you have already experienced pre-check, where you print off your boarding pass, and it has a little check that says pre-check, and you don't have to go through the, the lines anymore. We've all, that's a kind of a random thing, in my understanding. And, but the TSA was, put that into effect. We said, because we've grown so much, we have, we worked with the TSA, we have to ask, would you please put in more of the screening devices? They don't have to if they don't want to, but they did. And we've got two more screening devices there now, and, which has helped a lot for the flow. We've also redesigned the entryway during this period of time to increase the flow through. Interestingly, our big time is from about 5 o'clock in the morning till about 7 o'clock in the morning. Again, it's kind of like going to church on Easter, because that's when everything flows through there. People are trying to get out, to go across the United States. Big news, we have a new lease and operating agreement that we've instituted. Through the years, and this is historical, and Jim and I asked in this old administration, and said, why do we do it this way? We had an arrangement with airlines that we would go through the whole year, and then we'd look back at the end of the year, we'd send them some money, depending upon what the results were. Well, the problem was, we were sending them $800,000 or so at the end of the year. We said, we don't do that anymore. So as of this time, we now, we negotiated a new lease and operating agreement with all of our airlines. And interestingly, they all agreed. And we don't give that payment back to them anymore. We just calculated at the beginning, and we, and then we can adjust it so we go along through the year. So we don't, we don't refund them any money, no payment back. The other thing is, we now have, we've grown to the, to where we have 17 non-stop flights out of the airport, which is, our most recent one goes to Punta Gorda in Florida, which is north of Fort Myers. Some, some comedian says, well, I'd rather not have a non-stop flight. I'd rather have a, just, because I'd like to have an opportunity to stop. But the, these, we call them one-way flights or whatever. Not, we call them non-stop, even though, of course, they do stop. One of the other issues we had that you saw in the media the other day was, was a school lease matter. Interestingly, we, we had, we have that old place that they have had their school there for years, and our area is growing. If you look, it's a little hard to see, of course, but that whole area to the north of the cross of the runways, that's our growth area. And that's where we hope to be able to, we have our, our commercial people like Pioneer and all those kinds of people in there now, we have a need for that space. The school board had originally said they'd like to have five years on it to renew, because it was coming up for renewal last year, mid-year. And we said we wouldn't do that. But what we would do is we give them one year in their existing place, and then give them two more years in, in another facility at the airport, which is another commercial hangar. And they said, fine. We had, we entered into a lease back in June, both the school board and us, and thought that it was done. And then we see in the newspaper here about a week ago, that there was some stirrup by, that they said, that we thought maybe the school board needed more time. But I checked with the school board, then said, what do you need? And they said, we, we think maybe we will build our own facility. And so we need a little more time. He's, fine. So tomorrow, on our agenda is an amendment of that lease, give them some more time. So they'll be able to build their facilities, stay in this facility for a longer period of time, till they can get their, the facility built. And that's not a problem. It's just that, first we heard about it after having signed the lease, first thing you heard about it was in the, in the media. Let's talk about the National Guard for just a minute. That's one of the ongoing issues. Am I going too long, or are we still okay?
You're running about seven minutes over.
Okay, seven minutes. All right, I'll keep it short. I can, I think I can do that. National Guard, as you know, federal government said, we're not going to have F-16s at this airport anymore. The, so they are gone as of September. You still may hear one coming in on occasion, but that's because they're still repairing some here on occasion. But they're gone. That presented this issue for us at the airport. For these many years, the National Guard had been providing what we call ARF, Air and Fire Rescue Services. Because, of course, as, National Guard has to provide that for their airplanes, and so they provided that to us as, as a part of the deal. They, there was a small payment per year for a joint use of the airport. But basically, we didn't charge them for their ground. If you look on that one map that you've got, the one that has some red lines on it, that's where they, that's where they have, have leased that ground from, they had leased it from the city over the years. And so we, of course, took it as a part of the, when we, when we became an authority, that was then the lease that was transferred to us. The, they had provided this ARF service, Air, Fire and Rescue Services. But they told us that they are not going to provide that service anymore after September 30 of this year. So that's one of the things we're working on right now. We've had two public hearings on it, on how we replace this, and because it's, it has to be done. We have to provide that service, or else commercial airlines, well, nobody can fly there, under the FAA rules. But tomorrow, at our airport board meeting, we will reconsider, we'll continue to consider, I anticipate we'll be making a decision tomorrow. We've had a lot of ideas that have come forward, and we've looked at them all, considered everything that's come in. And that will be, that will be decided, I anticipate, tomorrow, at, at our third hearing on the matter. That's the National Guard thing. The other thing, I'll just say to you, our primary goal there will, of course, is safety. We want to make sure that everybody that comes in and out of that airport as, as a flyer, and anyway, it's going to be the, the best safety that we can possibly provide. But interesting, this, that service also covers the terminal as well. So that if somebody has a heart attack in the terminal, we, we will have the services that we go over. And first off, we have the police in there. They know how to operate those electrical shocks things. Immediately upon an, an incident being reported, the ARF people come over, and also the Des Moines Fire Department is notified. So everybody concentrates if somebody has that heart attack. If you have a crash, which is very seldom, but what they do have on occasion is somebody will call in, say a flap won't go down, or the front wheel, my, my tri, my landing gear won't go down, then everybody mobilizes until that's resolved. So that's, that is what will be done there. Tomorrow, we anticipate that we will make a decision on that. The Federal Aviation Agency, again, regulates that, tells us what we're supposed to do. They establish the rules, and it all comes down from the National Transportation Security, Security Board. They tell the FAA what they're to do. The FAA comes and tells us, the FAA inspects us to make sure that we are, that we are compliant. And the other thing is the National Guard lease, and I'm just about done. If you look at that map that I, that has the red mark on it, since they have told us they are not going to have an aeronaut, they're not going to have any flights in there anymore from the F-16s. We, our lease with them says, thinking back again now, remember, FAA, FAA, very interested in knowing what we do with our money. Because the FAA says, if we're going to give you these millions, which I've told you about today, we want to make sure that you're spending your money wisely. One thing you better not do is you better not give a tenant a good deal, better than what is fair market value. You got to lease all your properties at fair market value. Because if you don't, we're going to come in. And we've had them in before, because years ago, while I was on the board, we had a tenant that, that they said you weren't charging them enough. We worked it out. Now, what do we have here? You've got a situation, this one, which that whole 172 acres, we leased to them for a dollar a year. Now, you folks, back before we became an authority, bought eight, an eight million dollar stretch of ground over here, and we did it in the street. So our, our lease says, with the National Guard, that if at any time, they don't have an aeronautical mission there anymore, then you people, it says in there, you people, this is the FAA telling us, you've got to renegotiate that lease. And you've got to come up with a solution. We're, we're in that phase right now, because we, we have the lease, we now have a, a letter from the FAA, who is to us, that said, you have to renegotiate that lease, because that one dollar, if they don't have an aeronautical mission, that doesn't work anymore. Here's what we have done. We have told the National Guard, in effect, you know, you've got your 90-day notice, let's renegotiate, and just tell us what you need for your ongoing mission. Just tell us what you need, and let's talk about what is the fair market value for that rental space. And then we'll, we'll have a new amendment, amended lease. Hopefully, they will be able, you, you may have noticed that General Orr spoke to the legislature the other day, and said that we are going to have three missions, remotely piloted aircraft squadron, that's drones, but there won't be any drones here. They'll just have their electronics here, intelligence surveillance reconnaissance group, and a cybersecurity organization. Nothing in there about aeronautical mission. So we're in an interesting situation right now, because we got the FAA having given us a letter, is our funding source, our million-dollar funding source, millions of dollars funding source, just saying, you guys got a lease that doesn't comply, get it corrected. We got the National Guard, that is, as a landlord, or as a tenant, we haven't heard back from them yet. But we know that it has to be resolved. So we got, we're kind of in the middle right now. Got the National Guard here, and, who are saying they're going to have a mission. And we got the FAA saying, you got to revise that. So in effect, we've said to the National Guard, tell us what you need, let's work out a fair market value, and, and we're, we're done. Hopefully, they won't need 172 acres to do that. And if not, what we will do is we'll set about developing that rest of the 172 acres for, for our purposes. It'll be more, that's our commercial area. Okay, well, that's, that's a matter impending. Certainly, I suspect that, best I can tell you, I'll keep you posted, because I'm sure when I come back to see you again, we'll know more, because that 90 days will have expired. Now, for the future, and then I'm done. Don Smithy, man who brought us, who I, who I really attribute to having brought Southwest to us, is retiring as of this week. And we've anticipated that, and we've, we've posted, we've gotten resumes in. Tomorrow, we'll make a decision as to his replacement. And I believe you'll find that that will be Kevin Foley, who is our number two man out there. He's had 20 years of experience in running airports, and we've, I've worked with him, Jim's worked with him now for the last almost six years, done a great job. We, we believe he's the man who wants to, we want to run the airport from the state forward. Another thing we're working on, of course, is we want to continue to expand our flights. Right now, we, we can see markets that we don't cover, that we need to cover. One of the big ones that we get a lot of requests for, St. Louis. We have no direct flight to St. Louis. We'd like to get that one. We'd like to get LA. We'd like to get St. Louis, and Dallas, Fort Worth. Now, the last thing I'll mention to you that's coming, there'll be a week, it'll be next month that we'll receive, is a site study. We've had a, we've hired a company called Lay Fisher, specializes in airport planning. And for the last seven months, they've been working with a committee of our, of our Airport Board, who have been looking at what should be the development of this airport over the next long-range period. And they've spent seven months on this. Next March, we'll have a public hearing on that, and they will present their proposals. I haven't seen them yet, so I don't know what they will be. But this will try to give us a long-range view of what we should be doing. So that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that finishes my comments. Try to answer any questions you have. I don't have the answers, because I don't have all the answers. But if I don't have it, I will get it for you and get it to you.
Ed, I'm sure we all have a lot of questions, but let me just ask this one. One of our primary responsibilities as elected officials is to make sure we have safety covered. And I, you mentioned that, that with the air guard pulling out as of September 30th, that the fire service will change. We have gotten, I think individually and collectively, a lot of calls regarding that transfer of responsibility from the air guard to apparently the authority. The question that comes up to us, because the general public still thinks we have some authority out there and some responsibility in terms of public safety, is what's going to be the change in level of service in response with your solution after September 30th? as opposed to what it is now? And one of the other questions is, if, if, have we looked at all the options, and is there a necessity to move this forward, as you just mentioned, tomorrow? Or is there some way to flesh out all the available opportunities for, for options? What, what seems to be pressing to make the decision tomorrow, when, when you have stated that, that the decision, apparently the replacement has to be in place by September 30? Is there a reason why that seven, eight months of time needs to be in place? Does it take somebody that long to respond?
The problem is that we have lead times for acquiring equipment. For example, we've had to order a million-dollar truck that will be out there at that, our facility, and this isn't something that just came up. We've been at this, I think we did our request for proposals back, I think it was in October. So there's, this has been out there. We've known that the F-16s are going to leave for a long period of time. You know, it's been paper, we've, we've known about it, we've talked to them, and been advised. So we know, we've, this has been ongoing planning for a long period of time. We've looked at every angle. We've looked at, do we privately contract out? Do we try to run it ourselves? Should we set up our own fire department ourselves out there? We've, we've heard from a lot of people, we've heard from same people you've been hearing from about it. We've, we talked to the National Guard, would you folks like to continue to run it for us on a contract basis? They declined. We've looked around the country, what is available? We found a company that does this now at 18 other airports throughout the United States, and have been doing it for 36 years. So they're, they're a good contender. We've had two public hearings on it already, and tomorrow will be the third. We do have a timeline problem, so we've got, we have to get it done. So we think there's been adequate opportunity for people to give input. The other thing is the safety thing. Safety is our primary concern on this, and so we, we have to make, it's a judgment call as to, by this board, it's the board's responsibility to make that judgment call, and I, I know they take it with the highest degree of seriousness, and I think Jim would attest to that. We have met with people, we've done, we've run numbers to try to do alternative ways of doing it, we have all that amount, and that's the stuff we'll be considering. We're going to make a decision. But I can tell you that safety is our primary concern. And keep in mind that the National Transit, National Bureau of Transportation Safety establishes rules for, for safety in all areas, including airlines. But the FAA is the one that regulates us, and that's the one, we, we look to the FAA standards, and whatever we do, the FAA will come in and look at us and will examine us. And they will examine us every, every year, and every, and then they in turn come and do big studies of us. So can I guarantee to you that there'll never be an airplane accident? Can I guarantee you that there'll never have a heart attack in the, in the terminal? No, of course I can't. But I can tell you this, we're going to, we're going to pick a solution that will give the maximum safety. That's, that's what our job will be, and that's what it is, and that's what we're going to do.
Ed, quickly, we have a, some professionals sort of in that business that, that work for the city, and I'd like to ask Chief Kip, do you have any comments quickly that maybe Ed could take back to his, his board, and then I'll quickly throw it open to our council if they have some additional questions?
Excuse me. I'm Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, John Kip, Chief of the Fire Department. I had gone to the public hearing last Tuesday, and have talked with airport staff since that time. Previously, with the Air Guard, there was about a force of around 30 people, providing five to six people per shift, providing the R-force, as well as a non-transport paramedic level service. I've spoken with Chief Dan Deal with Pro-Tech and Kevin Foley extensively, and what they're proposing prior to our conversation on Friday or Thursday was a, a group of about 10 employees working about three people per shift, providing an AMT basic level of coverage, which is lower than it is today. What I recommended to them was a total of about 13 employees, providing four people per shift at a non-transport paramedic level, because those numbers provide for the FAA requirements on foam application on scenes, on aircraft for, for the runway. It provides for the two-in, two-out, which three people does not. And, and the difference is, if you have the four people, when you hear people talk about the two-in, two-out, it allows your mission to have possible interior operations during a fire, whether it is initially at the terminal, which we're going to go and take care of, or with the aircraft. And if you only have three, then you don't have that possibility. And so that's just a, an education piece, four people. And the, the paramedic versus the basic level is a matter of maintaining the level of service that is there, and it's what we provide when we get there, because anybody transported off the airport property will be transported by, by us, unless it's a case of a real disaster. But those extra 30, 60, 90 seconds really does make a, a lot of difference in our business, and there's, there's parts of the airport we can't get to, and it's why we've enjoyed the, the guard having that level of service. I did tell airport staff and Chief Deal with Pro-Tech that a solution like that puts me in a position to say, I think you've covered those bases, and I can get behind that, and it may lead to some synergies where perhaps with some of those similarities, there's, there's things we can explore that make training and administration of, of some of the EMS things more possible. And so it, it would be a compromised position if that was the, the deal that was eventually reached, but it also provides a higher level of service, and kind of opens the door for us to be more of a helping partner in some of the things that, that Pro-Tech had as a, as a reason for not wanting to, to go that, that extra step. So I was looking for first, what I thought would be the, the best for the level of safety, and, and then beyond that, what's possible. Because either way, we're a part of this relationship, we're always going to be a part of the response to the airport, and the final solution has to work, and that, for me, that's the most important thing. Provide for the safety, the relationship that can work.
All right. Skip, and then Chris and Chris.
Ed, on this map with the red line, is the Des Moines Air Lab on that map? Which, which building is it?
Actually, it's not a numbered building, I think. It was made it, we walked over here.
Okay. Okay. I heard you speaking that the FAA had said that we've got to seek fair market value on rental for buildings. However, it seems to me that it'd be kind of crazy, the residents of Des Moines own the airport, they also own the Des Moines schools, so they'd be charging themselves fair market value, and I was just wondering, is there an exemption allowed from the federal government on this?
No. Interestingly, the one time that I can recall that I was involved in, where the OIG, Office of the Inspector General came down on us, was that, was that one.
Did, did they send a letter pertaining to that?
Yeah.
Could we get a copy?
Yeah, we've got a whole record on it.
Okay.
I'll make sure we get that for you.
The, the other question I've got is on Des Moines Police Department out there.
That's about 15 years ago.
Okay.
We'll get it for you.
My other question is about being staffed for security by Des Moines Police out there, and I keep hearing rumblings that you want to lower the number out there, and I would encourage you not to do that. I know myself, I'm out at the airport a lot. I like seeing Des Moines PD out there, they're very highly trained, and if there should be an incident, I want somebody that knows what they're doing out there, and it's, I think that when this, if it goes public, the public would have a lot to say about
We, we share your, that safety is our primary concern, and this, these, these, all these considerations that we're going to, you're going to hear about tomorrow. We've got a lot of input, and we appreciate it, and that's, that's the nature of it.
Chris?
Following up on Skip and your comment here, and then I have a couple of quick questions. I'm glad you keep saying safety is the number one issue. I have found in my time on the council that while our citizens don't like paying high taxes, they don't want us to be cheap on safety with our police, fire, and other first responders especially, and I, and I hope the Airport Authority Board acts that way and deliberates that way, especially tomorrow when you're talking about fire safety. Is, is my, my question, when, when we have a contractor and a different group out there, is our radio communication and everything in sync, and does that, is it in sync without us having to make any other investments on our end?
As far as I know, I could, I don't know the answer to that. No, I'm sure it is, because what they do is...
Will you ensure for the citizens of Des Moines that you'll ask them to make any investment that's necessary to be able to talk to our systems, so that we're not asking the citizens of Des Moines to pay for that?
Sure. I, I don't anticipate there'd be a problem, but that'd be fine. You mean this electronic communication maker?
Yeah, I mean, we run into that with other jurisdictions and other things, and I would just hate to learn six months from now that we're investing in, you know, some kind of system because we didn't have it ahead of time.
I, I do know in the, in the RFP calls for the, the private contractor to provide the radios that operate on the existing radio frequency systems, and I'm sure that it's been taken from the RFP to the...
Okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't know. That's fine.
And the other, the other two questions, just tied in terms of the level of service and whether or not a current level of services that's being contemplated by the Airport Board is going to require more resources as kind of a backup or second tier from the city, police, or fire? And if that is, if that's true, that we're going to be called on more, is there an arrangement now for the Airport Authority to pay for that higher level of service that Des Moines Fire or Des Moines PD would be paying for?
I think the answer is we don't anticipate that there will be. I think, but, you know, that's, will be discussed tomorrow as well, but I don't think, we don't really believe it will be. There are these mutual aid agreements that are, we enter into, I'm told, with all of the local communities, including Des Moines, because if they had some major thing, I think they all come together and try to help out. But we do have the ability, we have the ability to expand our items that we call upon in that particular contract that he's talking about. We have the ability to say, say, we need this, we need that, we need additional persons, and we can add them as we go along. Sure.
My, my concern is that mutual aid agreements and other things are, are valuable to us, but this is a facility in the city of Des Moines. We ultimately have responsibility for it, and what I don't want to see happen, and, and again, respecting you and the authorities board, that safety is first, what I don't want to see happen is that we narrow the contracts and the private contractors so that more of the public services fall on the city.
Sure.
And all we've done is we've changed it from the, from the people paying for the service, those wealthy enough to buy expensive airline tickets, to the property taxpayers of Des Moines, and that shift is what I want to make sure that we are avoiding completely.
I agree.
And if we see data that, that shows us that our calls and our time spent there is increased because of this change to a, a contract for, for this, I, I think you're going to see the council want to ensure that the Airport Authority is paying for that. And, and I, I hope that's considered tomorrow, and as you go through this process, because making a short-term decision for safety and that is less expensive may not turn out to be less expensive very long, if it requires more services from Des Moines PD and Des Moines Fire.
Yeah, let's set aside for a minute, so as you think through that, it's, we hope to continue to grow the Des Moines Airport and the, particularly the people who fly in and out of Des Moines Airport. Statistically, you can see we had a 6% rise in 2013 or 2012. That means more people are in there. That means statistically, you're going to have more heart attacks, maybe? That being aside, because that would be the city's responsibility to make sure if we just grow. But what you're worried about, which is absolutely right, if we are cutting back services some way so that the city has to pick up more for the same service, that wouldn't be right. We won't, we won't do that. We'll make sure we're careful about that. We do have really good statistics, and we know how many times the Fire Department has had to come out. We know how many heart attacks we've had, how many, we know all that, and we'll be monitoring that all the time.
I would appreciate, maybe, maybe you're working with the City Manager's Office to develop some kind of report on an appropriate period of time. I don't know if it's quarterly or annually, but...
We'll, we'll have that, we'll be happy to do that. Sure.
Christine?
Let me just follow up on, because, you know, on several of the things I wanted to, and I, I guess I take it just a little bit further, Ed, and ask that there be specific criteria that we can look at and evaluate besides the growth issue, but based upon the level of service that you're recommending versus what the National Guard, because I've talked with some members from the National Guard, and they felt that that level of service was more than what would be needed, and so there's probably someplace in between. The chief is making some suggestions. I'm assuming that that's probably got a fairly good price tag to it, $250,000, $300,000 is my guess, but it seems like...
That's a good guess. But that, we're not, we're not doing this based on money. I can assure you that the money is not going to be in consideration. We're going to talk, safety first, and make sure you have adequate service. That's what, that's the way we're approaching it. Now, that's what we'll talk, we'll talk about that more tomorrow, and then the board can make that decision.
It would be easy to add the people that...
We, we can easily add what he, what he's mentioned. We can do it tomorrow, we can do it six months from now if the statistics show differently.
Okay. And one, and this is just a comment, ongoing communications is, has been my biggest frustration with the Airport Authority. I understand the governance structure, but I believe, as a council member, that we need to have some ongoing communication on a quarterly basis. You've said a couple of times, so I'd ask that you commit to that. And the other thing is, I think there are some of these issues that the Airport Authority is dealing with, that it would be appropriate to make sure the council's aware of it before it comes out in the paper, because we get calls, as several of us have said, and I don't have a clue.
Yeah.
I mean, and I feel like I should have a clue to be able to answer, changing of terminals and some of the things that have been talked about, and the site study, I believe, before it comes out in March of 2015, it is extremely important that stakeholders have an opportunity to participate in the process and not just come out with a recommendation in March.
Yeah. There, there won't be any recommendations in there that we will be able to act on right away. In other words, we're just receiving it for the first time in this public hearing, and the timetable on something like that will be years. This is just an overall view of the airport and all of our structure, so that we, one of the major concerns is we don't want to all of a sudden decide, let's put a building over someplace, and come to find out that's not good for the long-range planning for the airport.
So the 27 plan that was approved by the, the airport, would have been the Airport Board at that point, are we saying that some of the recommendations in there regarding the location of the terminal, et cetera, all of that's on hold, so we're looking, with this new site plan, we'll determine?
Again, I don't know what this, I have not seen the, and I haven't even heard what it's going to say, but it wouldn't surprise me if that changes, because things do change. They were, I was on that committee that did that one that you're talking about, and I think things have changed. Yeah? The, I, I think I understand all your questions, and I think I can make sure you get that data and your idea about, let's talk about it every quarter. I mean, I'm happy to come in here every quarter or more often if you want me to. The other thing, and feel, the other part of half of that is, if you get a call about something, and here's, you're going to get calls that I won't know about, just call me. You all got my cell phone number, and you know where to reach me. I'd rather have you call me and ask me about it, so I can tell you what's going on, because usually there's quite a bit more going on. As you can see, I have to say, in two and a half years we've been at this, then, we've done pretty good... a pretty good job. And you said you don't want to read it in the paper. We don't read it in paper either because if somebody does something we never heard about, which was the case a week ago, we've read it in the paper just like you did. So as soon as we did, I called Tom Ahart and said, what's the problem? He says, I want to, we want to build a new facility. I said, and we need a little more time. I said, we've got the amendment on the agenda tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
But we didn't know about it until we got that. Just got a call from a reporter.
You want to make any comments quickly, and then we probably ought to talk about the budget?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, just frankly, to sort of sum up and emphasize some of the comments that have already been made about the fire service in particular, the mayor and I have had a chance to visit with you and Kevin, which has been very helpful, at least my understanding of it. And, I mean, the big picture for me is that we're going from a situation where the National Guard provides a level of service and fire service that's relatively high. And the city's fire service, if you will, is predicated on that level of service. So as that service from the National Guard goes away and is restructured in a way, even with the loss of the F-16s, my view is that there is a shift of fire service that would occur at the proposed level of service from your contractor back to the city. So the thing, the bottom line for me is the proposal that Chief De Kip has outlined, I think, is a really thoughtful one. And I would really urge the board and your staff to work through that. We know you have to be sensitive to the dollar impacts of these things. But I don't think anybody wants an unintended shift of that responsibility back to the city and then put us in a situation where we really can't afford it. And I think the one particular element of it that's critical in talking to the chief is the emergency medical service and our ability, your ability, to provide that. And we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where that serves demand upon us on the city is more than we can reasonably accommodate without shifting or impacting some of the things that we're doing in a neighborhood across the city. So my hope is that there is a chance to do it. You guys have been open to these ideas, and I know, I know you'll look at it, but this is a particularly important one, I think, that impacts not only the safety issues, but our ability as a city to provide the level of service that we know everybody wants to have. So my hope is that you will do that, and I know Chief De Kip is available to work with you as soon as you can do that, so.
Ed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Call me anytime.
All right, let's quickly move on and see if we can't throw in a fiscal year ending 15 and 16, the operating capital budgets, follow up from our past budget presentations.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, while Scott Sanders is going to come up and talk about this, he's got a few things to say. We just wanted today, we did a budget presentation at your last workshop that rolled out a series of recommendations. As much as anything, we just wanted to give you a chance, if you had, for the thoughts about that, to reflect back to us, any ideas, suggestions, things that you want us to look at that we haven't talked about. So as much as anything, this is your chance to react back to. We'll do this again at the next workshop, so if you don't think of it today, you've got another couple of weeks to do that so we can build it into the budget. But with that, Scott, you're on.
Yep. Good morning, Scott Sanders, Finance Director. At the table, you should have a copy of your capital improvement plan. It has the same format and look as last year with all the updated project, numbers, dates, and descriptions. The operating budget book is at the printer right now, and so we will have that for you tonight at your council meeting. And again, it will have a similar look to it with the same departmental breakouts. The schedule that we have before us then is, obviously, you can bring questions through the city manager's office at any point in time, but we do have the February 24th workshop meeting in the morning where we can take questions and have answers for you as well. And then the anticipated approval of the budgets would be March 10th at that council meeting. So with that, I am just really available for questions.
I'll get my questions to you ahead of time.
Okay.
I would just add one of the comments. The town hall meetings we had last week, at least from my perspective, they went well. The comments I heard back from councilmembers on that were positive as well and from those who attended. There weren't a huge number of citizens that showed up, but it was televised and will be repeated. And I thought the discussion that was had was good and informative, and I hope that's the reaction that councilmembers had as well.
I thought your presentation, Scott, was excellent and laid out in a very easy way for all of us to understand, especially those that don't work with the budget a lot. I thought it came across very well.
Thank you. Obviously, a team after the city manager's office and the departments.
Any questions quickly and later?
Thank you.
Scott, nice presentation. Especially this morning. All right, so let's quickly get an update on the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency fiscal year 14 amended and 15 proposed budgets.
Good morning, Mayor County. Members of the Des Moines City Council, Doug Romig, Housing Services Director. Due to the time constraints, I will try to be brief. As the council remembers, a couple of months ago, we hired Nan McKay and Associates to conduct a analysis of our organization. The charge of that was to look at our organizational structure, to make sure we're most effective, identify optimal staffing needs, recommend opportunities to streamline procedures, and identify best practices and performances. The team, anybody that works for Nan McKay and Associates has to have practical experience in public housing authorities. The team that came into Des Moines is listed there. One was Vice President of the San Diego Housing Authority. They had an expert in public housing and an expert in Section 8 that previously worked in Chicago's housing authority. The process they went through is that we had sent them a lot of documentation prior to them coming onsite. While onsite in Des Moines, they did tour most of our public housing buildings and units. They had individual meetings with our administrative staff team. They met with two of our board members. They had group meetings with each division, so every employee in our department was able to visit with them. And then also onsite, they reviewed additional documents and requested some additional information after they went back prior to finalizing their report and recommendations. The challenges that are being faced are the same as they've been. There's not enough federal funding to sustain operations within the programming. HUD is striving to get housing authorities to utilize all of their reserves that they have available. We've been utilizing our reserves for several years to the point we run out of our Section 8 reserves this fiscal year. The results of the study, once fully implemented, we believe will improve the quality of the program and services we provide and also generate some additional savings. The main change is how we structure the programs that we run. We currently have a leasing division, so we have a team of staff that handles all the application screening and processing for both Section 8 and public housing. Once that unit gets leased up or that tenant is selected to move into one of our units, then it gets transferred over to what's called our occupancy division, which handles lease enforcement, changes of income. And then we separate out some relocations if somebody's moving from one unit to another unit or they're porting in or out of the community from our jurisdiction to another's jurisdiction. We have specialized staff that handles with that. What Nan McKay is recommending is that we separate our functions based on our Section 8 program and our public housing program. So you've got dedicated resources to those two different aspects of the programs that we operate. Specific recommendations under that model, we currently have a caseload of about 500 per case manager, but they're not doing full case management. They recommend that our case managers within the Section 8 program do full range of services and get that to a 425 caseload per case manager. We have a vacant position, administrative position within our public housing side. They recommend we hire a strong asset manager that's familiar with property management. We're in the process right now of working with human resources and the city's Position Review Committee to look at that vacant position and doing a recruitment for that position. We need to increase our training and utilization of our integrated software system. We're in the process of converting our software system. It was an old DOS-based, so it was quite antiquated. So we will be actually implementing the conversion of our public housing operations this month and doing staff training. We've converted our Section 8 about six months ago and our administrative suite about three months ago. So staff needs to get trained on that. We need to use the full functionality of that program to make us more efficient and more effective moving forward. And we also need to automate our forms and look at moving to electronic client files. Right now, we do, we have a lot of paper we generate through our agency and do a lot of work on paper that we can automate to save time and money. They were aware of the opportunity for us to relocate to the Parks and Recreation Administration Office when that becomes vacant in about six months. They recommended moving toward that to reduce our lease payments and save about $100,000 a year in operating cost. We, with the reorganization of our agency, we reduced some of our maintenance staff, added in some contractors. We need to improve our unit turnarounds and lease ups. Again, that gets back to separating out our Section 8 and our public housing function to make sure we've got a robust pool of applicants. So when we get a vacancy, we can get that unit flipped and get a qualified tenant into the unit as soon as possible. Now, within the report, they had a list of streamlined changes within our Section 8 program. We will be reviewing those over the course of this next year and looking at making some of those changes and implementations to our annual agency plan. Diversifying revenues through low-income housing tax credits was identified in their report. And then with the change, one of the changes we're going to have within our public housing program, effective in FY15, which we'll show in the budgets that were handed out to you, is HUD is allowing us to combine our elderly manors. We have three elderly manors. Technically, we have four, but Highland Park, Oak Park are combined under a budget. So Highland Park, Oak Park, Southview, and Eastview will be combined under one budget titled elderly manors. And that will help our public housing assessment system score because part of that scoring is based on percentage of vacancy rate. So if you've got 190 units with a few vacancies versus one unit with a few vacancies, that percentage changes and will improve our scoring in that area. I can answer any quick questions on that, otherwise I can proceed with the impact of those changes and our budget.
Anybody? Go ahead.
Okay. Real quick, the budget information is provided to you. We are on the same timeline as the city's operating budget, so we will have our public hearing as well on March 10th. Back in December of 13, we did receive approval from HUD on the use of disposition proceeds for these items, just under $106,000 for our software upgrades. That was going to be an operating expense. We can use those proceeds dollars, so that helped our operating budget. Reimbursement for the treatment of bedbugs, $2.5 million, which this council already authorized us to move forward to proceed with the modernization of Roy Ovea Manor, up to $1.75 million for the acquisition relocation of the housing administration offices to 3226 University. And then the big piece was the approval to utilize up to $445,000 to cover our Section 8 administrative shortfalls. In the last budget cycle, the Des Moines City Council actually appropriated a backstop of $250,000 to balance our budget for FY14. This will take that burden off the taxpayers of the city of Des Moines and allow us to use disposition proceeds to cover that shortfall. That was the total shortfall estimated for FY14, but we would be utilizing the remaining Section 8 reserves, so the actual transfer would be just around a quarter million dollars. Good news, federal government appropriations have gone up this year. We've seen an 8.5% increase in public housing operating funds, 5.5% increase in our capital fund, and a 6% increase in our Section 8 administrative fees. The reduced federal funding still will not sustain our operations. We were at 69% proration for Section 8. That's gone up to 75. When I started three years ago, it was at 92%. So we're still projecting a deficit within our Section 8 administrative operating funds moving forward. So actions that we will be needed from this body to balance our budget for the amended FY14 and the proposed FY15 is the approval to spend the 100, just under $106,000 for our software upgrades. $75,000 would be needed to manage our deficit due to pest control issues we're dealing with. As I noted before, we already have HUD approval to spend up to $445,000, but we only need $250,000 to balance our Section 8 administrative budget for FY14. And we're projecting a deficit of $450,000 for Section 8 administration for FY15 due to reduced federal funding, or federal funding levels that are not sufficient enough to manage the program based on the regulatory requirements we fall under.
Any questions? Anybody? Doug, I personally want to thank you for your update on this. I think sometimes there's, a question appears when we have a quick meeting prior to our city council meetings that maybe we hadn't had a full explanation of all the issues. So I think that this helped us lay that out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Doug, how are we going to cover the shortfall?
The recommendation is that we would use our disposition proceeds. One of the budget sheets that is in front of you, you have the FY14 amended, FY15 proposed, and then it also shows our current balance within our disposition proceeds. And there's over $3 million available in that fund. So this is a short-term stopgap. Why, we work to look at long-term solutions, low-income housing tax credits, increased federal appropriations. I know in our request for the use of those Section 8 administrative fees, four other agencies throughout the nation have the same request, you know, that are falling in the same situation we are. One of the recommendations from the consultant was to use those disposition funds to set aside a reserve for our public housing operations. I contacted HUD and they said, you can't do that. That's a not allowable use. You can use it for direct expenses, but you can't use it to build up a reserve within public housing. So...
You said you have requests into HUD. How likely are they going to be granted?
The, everything that was presented today has been approved with the exception of the FY15 funds, and I've been in communication with them to clarify a couple of points. And that recommendation, I anticipate to have before your next meeting, which is when I would bring that action forward on the 24th. So when you adopt the budget on the 10th, then those, that preapproval to use the disposition funds to balance our budget would have occurred.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, just two comments about this. The use of the disposition dollars to pay for the operating shortfall is good. It's good news. It relieves us of some obligation to use our general fund dollars for that purpose. But just as a cautionary note, long-term wise, that's not a long-term strategy. That addresses the issue for a couple of years. There's funds in that account, but there needs to be continued attention at how you plug that hole on the operating side of the ledger. And using one-time dollars from that source is probably not a long-term strategy. It helps us right now, and this is good, but long-term strategy still needs focus and attention. Item two, just so people know, we've said this publicly, there is significant interest on the part of Polk County of leasing to the city on a very favorable rate, space in their River Place...
River Trace?
River Place.
Complex up on Douglas Avenue and, or Euclid, I should say. And that would be a wonderful option. It does relieve us of the need to spend. I think Doug had $1.25 million or $1.6 in their dispo dollars for that purpose. That need would not be there, and this would be really a terrific solution if it comes to pass and all the parties agree. It would be great synergies and sort of a one-stop shop with other services that the county provides. So there's some really good initiatives there on the housing side.
Just quickly, Doug, so the recommendations from this consultant, the plan is to fully implement all of those? And what's the timeline?
To implement, yeah, most of the changes, the organizational changes, we totally agree with. The process we went through is I met with our administrative staff team, and then we also set up an employee team. We had the union identify representatives they wanted, and we have full support from our entire workforce regarding the recommendations from the consultant. So the process right now is I meet with the Position Review Committee tomorrow to justify moving forward with these vacancies. We held three positions open since July 1st, waiting for this study. So we'll end up being fully staffed, filling three positions slightly different than what they were previously. The intent is to hire the employees, start doing some cross-training, and looking at beginning the transition July 1st.
Okay.
Anything else? Doug, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I, we're going to open it up in just a second here for a public comment. I do want to make a, an announcement...
I think he's got one more presentation.
Do you have something else?
The subsidy standard language that was on the agenda tonight, you guys wanted to speak about briefly.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
If you can do the overhead, Dan. In front of you is, there's a, should be a spreadsheet, and there's some on the table. It talks about the various options regarding the subsidy standard that was presented at the last city council meeting or the municipal housing governing board meeting. Some of the questions that were raised were what would be the impact based on the, the language? The actual language is in front of you. I took out the language so it would read better on the screen. If you have this sheet...
We don't.
We don't. I was in the packet.
We can see it here. We'll get it where we want it.
The, the current language basically allows two children of the same gender would be required to share a bedroom. Children of opposite gender would be required to share a bedroom until the age of six.
It's in the book.
And then adults of opposite gender, other than married couples, were not required to share a bedroom. That's our current language.
Wait a second, Doug. I think people can't find the page. Everybody have that? It's in your binder.
It's in the binder.
It's in the binder. It's the same thing that's on the screen, but it might be easier to read on hard copy.
So if there is no, obviously, if the options were not approved, there would be no impact, no, no savings, no additional families to be served. One of the reasons this thing, this item came up is we were researching, as we talked about, you know, how can we serve more families? We're serving 3,000 families now. We have over 3,300 on our waiting list. That waiting list has been closed since July of 2011. And we have an issue with our administrative budget shortfalls on the Section 8 side. So we looked at other agencies and the language they use. Central Iowa Region Housing Authority, Eastern Iowa Region Housing Authority, the Sioux City Housing Authority, and they all use similar or stricter language. And for an example of this, I did have somebody call me from Central Iowa Region Housing Authority. They received their voucher, but they wanted to port into Des Moines because they'd get an extra bedroom, coming to Des Moines under our current language versus if they stayed in the jurisdiction where they received their voucher. So the recommended language that went through the public input process is stated that we would do one-bedroom subsidy standards, would be assigned for every two household members, regardless of age, gender, or familiar status. That would generate approximately $700,000 in additional housing assistant payment revenues once fully implemented over the course of 12 months, allowing us to serve another 140 families. At the last council meeting, there was a question about, well, could we grandfather-in existing clients? And what would that impact be? Based on our transition of 30 to 40 people, either through relocations or leaving the program, we figured that we would be able to serve about 26 families annually, generating about $130,000 in housing assistant payments. And it would take us five to six years to reach that same number of $700,000. Now, granted, we're not going to fully cycle all 3,000 families, but based on average turnover, that was the estimated impact and timeframe to reach those same numbers. And then also, what was provided is some alternative language where you would have a one-bedroom subsidy standard would be assigned to the head of household and then every two members thereafter. That would have a one-time impact of about $140,000, allowing us to serve an additional 28 families. We do and have prepared alternative roll calls for this evening. And I can try to answer any questions you have.
I'm sorry. I think I was at least one of the people that asked questions about the grandfathering in and how that would work. I, I would probably most like to support a plan that was kind of two-pronged, one that grandfathered people in, but also anytime somebody moved...
Correct.
...they restarted. So would that be a number that's bigger than the 26? Because you also have all the, you know, the migration from one, one unit to another.
No, that included relocation. So if somebody in the existing program moved, plus the transition rate or turnover rate would be that 26 annually.
So that accomplishes...
New families annually.
So, all right. My, I, I thought, I thought you had said, let me just get my head around this real quick, Doug, but I thought, I thought you said that we had well more than 10% of, maybe 20% of all of our clients that move each year?
No, a total of about 10 that would move over the course of a year.
10 total clients out of the 3,300?
Out of, per month.
10 per month. So of the 26, 10 are, are related to moving and 16 would be related to those falling off of Section 8 and new, new participants? I just thought last time that number would be bigger than 26 if you combined the two.
Yeah. The way we calculate, well, the way we calculate it was actually based on HAP payments, the housing assistant payments, and then divided out the, the dollar amounts. So it'd be $130,000 divided by 5,000 per family, which is our annual housing assistant payments. Because some of the people that are moving or, or coming into the program would be right-sized. Not everybody in the program is going to have a change in their subsidy standard.
Mm-hmm.
So you can't tie actual move-outs with move-ins.
Maybe the council doesn't agree with me, but you know, my, my hope, because I think long-term, this is the right thing to do. I just hate to force people into a situation where they have to move when they're already in a vulnerable position. You know, I would probably say, my own perspective would be, let's, let's combine three things. Grandfather in the existing ones. Change every new one. Change everybody that moves from unit to unit, but fully implement it not in seven years, but in three years. So we would give everybody like 36 months' warning. And then, and then, then you'd have the full $700,000 saved within 36 months instead of seven years from now. But that, that would be kind of where, because then we'll give people plenty of warning, 36 months to, to start to think about how they budget appropriately or, or, or find a place that meets the subsidy level that we're willing to offer.
And, and I, I think I agree with that. Timing is critical, just to give them enough time. You know, $10, $20 a month may not seem a lot to some people, but people that are living on fixed income, it might as well be $10,000 a month. So I think that we need to be really sensitive to that. So based upon that scenario, I think what we're talking about then would be the grandfathering in. And you're saying five to six years. Chris is wanting to do it in approximately three years. What would be the impact then? If you could go back and have that for us tonight when we talk about that?
Sure. Well...
Because you're saying right now, it's going to take five to six years to do 26 annually and...
Right. If we just did the true grandfather, it would take five to six years. If you want to put a sunset on it, we can't, then after three years, it would be effective regardless of whether they relocated or not. We would...
Right.
We would require them then at their next annual to relocate or pay more in rent if they chose to stay in place for those that didn't meet the new standard. So it would be three years.
Yeah, three years would be adequate time.
I, I think my, my, my concern with the fully implementation is, is simply that July 1st does not allow adequate time for people that have a six-month or year-long lease to adjust their living situation if they don't want to pay more out of pocket, as Christine says. So if we could move it back 24 or 36 months of fully implementing it, then I think we've given everybody plenty of time to make their own plans. Nobody's signed in a 36-month lease, and, and that allows them to make some decisions. But for people that sign a year-long lease now, we're making this decision now to affect it in the middle of a lease or their middle of their housing situation, I think is something that we could plan around and just delay the full positive impact of the budget, you know, 24 months or 36 months from now.
Doug, can you revise this sheet here to incorporate that option so council can see them all?
Yes.
And have a roll call on that option if that's the way they want to go.
I'll just make one comment. You know, I think that, that we have had some calls and some people that have talked to us regarding this. It doesn't, regardless of how we handle it, Doug, doesn't remove some of the very unusual situations that, that could occur given this scenario. And unfortunately, it again throws a burden on, on families that are low-income, that are in a situation whereby you're, you're having opposite sex, father, single father with a, you know, 15-year-old daughter. How do you handle that? I mean, it's, it, and they're in this situation because they're in an income status that they, they qualify to get this kind of, of help. So while we're expanding to get more people served, or at least hopefully trying to, it, it does adversely impact a number of folks that have, are uneasy about this.
Yeah. That is correct. That's, yeah, it's, the issue is the level of service versus the number of families to serve.
Okay. Doug, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Again, prior to opening our public comment, I do want to announce to everybody, I'm going to add an extra item onto our agenda this evening. We have received a challenge as to the eligibility of one of the candidates running in the Fourth Ward City Council race. By code, we are required, the city is, to convene a board. The board to review that situation is comprised of the city clerk, the mayor, and a city council member. And so we will have a, a ballot, as I understand, this evening to select a member of this body, of the city council, to serve on that board to review the challenge. I anticipate that we will have that challenge review tomorrow evening. And so I think that just to everybody here, to let everybody know that that's what we're going to do, we are required by state code to convene this board and to have that hearing. All right. Having said that, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience to make any comment on any of the information that you have heard today or any request in general? Go ahead.
Hi, Councilwoman Mayor. Melissa Delisle, 3513 Balmar Drive. I am on the Section 8 program, had some discussions with you all last time. A little disappointed that a lot of those issues weren't brought up today, but I did bring them up to your attention. I'm very glad that the mayor brought up exactly what I wanted to comment on was the fact that I'm most shocked about is that there's not a great concern about the wording that's being presented to have two people in one bedroom, no matter your sex, your relationship, or your age. And that does bring quite alarm to me, I would hope to other people. Just in trying to consider the ramifications long-term in a community that's required to live under those conditions, whether it be your family or someone else in this community. It's interesting because I've spoken to people not only in this community, but other communities. You know, with the fact that they have that there does not necessarily mean that we have to have it here. It's kind of like your mom used to tell you, just because somebody jumped off the bridge doesn't necessarily mean you're going to do it. But in those discussions, I did talk to a young teenage girl. And just asking anybody in the community so far, you know, their thoughts on this change and this wording. I haven't found one person yet that thinks it's appropriate or acceptable. And her comments of the girl, to me, were to ask them, meaning people making this requirement, to try to live in those situations themselves, as she would not want to share a bedroom with her adult father. So since I believe that the vote should be to protect and be in the best interest of the community in all fairness, I guess today, I was wanting to ask the council if they find this wording and the requirements for these different living situations in our community to be appropriate, acceptable, and in their best interest, and maybe why.
Any questions? Anybody? Thank you for making...
That's my question to you.
All right.
So I don't know, I asked if I was able to ask the council questions, if they were able to respond to that question.
Anybody have any comment?
I, I'll, I'll just quickly tell you that a lot of the issues that come before this table are not black and white. You love one, you know, you love one option and you hate the other option. In this case, it's my desire, with the limited amount of affordable housing that we have in this community, is to choose to spread it so that more families have it. And, and quite frankly, while I think you make some good points, the point isn't strong enough to me that would we, we would leave another family on the streets or in some kind of shelter without their own house, without their own home. And if this allows us to serve hundreds of more families, I'm willing to do it. I respect your position. It's weighing two really difficult aspects of the public policy that we have before us. And, and, you know, I'm going to stand with trying to provide more care to more people with the limited public dollars that we're offering. You know, that's, that's, that's my, that's my answer.
And I would just add to that. I have had conversations with individuals that are on Section 8, and they were pleased with the time that was taken. And even though you may not be happy, and there may be others that are not happy, there has been some compromise made here. I don't think there's anybody here that's not sensitive to the financial issues and the timing process. So the discussion is to give adequate time and to allow people some time to look at other options if that's what they so desire. I believe will be accomplished here with some of the language that's being proposed. And I specifically had conversations with one individual that was extremely pleased with the, the direction that we were headed. So, you know, you're talking with a group that's not, but we're also getting input from others that are feeling that there has been some positive movement.
There you go. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Christine, the one you talked to, were they on the waiting list?
No, they're actually in housing right now.
They're already part of the program.
They are.
It's not that I'm not willing to do compromise as well, because as I expressed last time, I mean, I have, I've been approved for a four-bedroom voucher, and I've been living for years with a subsidiary of three. So I, I'm trying to do something there. I would think that there could be some other options or discussions around on how to help additional families besides some of this wording. Maybe they're not approved by HUD, but then people would need to have discussions with HUD on their requirements and policies as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just might make one further comment that, that I, as she has pointed out, I, I don't think that we want to compromise the safety of any of our citizens regardless of age or regardless of, of gender. And, you know, if there's a possibility that, that it compromises that, I am really, I would be hopeful that we could accommodate those people that are worried by this kind of a situation. It's, it's a tough, tough situation to throw in, and certainly we want to serve as many families as possible, but possibility of, of throwing people into a situation that would compromise their safety is, is really troublesome to me. Anybody else? I want to thank you all for attending. We'll see you this evening at city council. This meeting's adjourned. This meeting's adjourned.
I'll meet you downstairs.